It is my pleasure to call to order the October 14th, 2021 Board of Commissioners of Abington Township regular public meeting. Can we please start with a roll call?
Commissioners Thompson?
Here.
Brodsky?
Here.
Boe?
Here.
Carswell?
She was here.
Rockman?
I'm here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Zepone?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
De Placido?
Here.
Weingrad?
Here.
Behe?
Here.
Tribber?
Here.
Hecker?
Here.
Spiegelman?
Here. And let it be noted, Commissioner Carswell is present. All right, please rise if you are able and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which is standing as one nation under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I have a brief announcement that at 6 o'clock tonight, October 14th, 2021, Board of Commissioners' executive session was held to discuss a real estate matter. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we can go right ahead with public comment on agenda items. We're going to start with the folks who are here in the room, and then we're going to go to the folks who are participating via Zoom. So first, folks who are in the room, as usual, please introduce yourself, name and street, and three minutes, please. Thank you.
Joe Rooney, Mint Flatiron. What value do you place on free speech? What value do you place on good government? I'm here to discuss three issues: free speech, abuse of power in office, and violation of the Sunshine Act. I will start with an anecdote. As a Marine, I trained to become an expert fighter pilot. I needed to learn how to fly the F-4 and F-18 to the very limit of its designability.
Mr. Spiegelman, are these on the agenda item?
This is called the maneuver.
Mr. Rooney, I'm sorry, Mr. Rooney. Mr. Rooney, I apologize for the interruption, but what agenda item is this pertaining to?
Sunshine Act.
No, the Sunshine Act isn't an agenda item. That's general comments for afterwards.
So you're not going to let me continue this?
You can finish afterwards. This is for public comment on agenda items. Public comment at the end...
Can I ask a question? Who was interrupting me? Was it the solicitor?
Mr. Rooney.
No, I was pointing out to Commissioner Spiegelman that our speaking rules were being violated because you were not speaking on an agenda.
And I have all these board members up here, and the board members didn't say anything but the solicitor can interrupt a citizen when he's talking?
Mr. Rooney, if you have comments on agenda items, please make them. Otherwise, you can comment at the end. You have your statement all prepared. You can comment at the end. You could start from where you began, or you could start over. It'll be up to you.
But this is inappropriate, and I don't think anybody asked that gentleman's advice on anything.
Mr. Rooney?
Yes.
If you have comments on agenda items, please make them now. Otherwise, you can come back up at the end.
Wow.
All right, comments from folks in the room on agenda items. All right. Hearing none in the room, let's go to folks on Zoom who have their hands raised for agenda items. I actually can't see the screen, so if you could just let the first Zoom participant in, and we'll ask them to please state your name and street and begin your three-minute comments.
Laura Layman, Bryant Lane. And when you're going to be that long getting on Zoom, please have a message that says that you are not... Otherwise, people will leave. They'll go, "I can't get on." So have a message that says that we're waiting and that they're not having technical difficulties. Okay? And have you yet amended the agenda to say that PREIT's been canceled? Not PREIT, but Penn State's been canceled? Or have you not? Because you knew it mid-yesterday, and anybody who spent all that time looking at documents that are going to change, what a shame, when you knew it mid-yesterday. Have you changed that agenda item or not, Mr. Spiegelman?
We'll get to the agenda next, and change the agenda will be announced.
Because I'm not going to answer your ding-dang questions, right? That's the kind of commissioner you are. You're not going to answer questions that residents ask. The War Memorial, Mr. Michelot. Mr. Michelot was not a hero for everybody in the township. There were many, many people...
You know, Ms. Layman, I'm sorry. This is a personal ad hominem attack. I'm cutting it off right now. Mr. Manfredi?
It is not an ad hominem attack.
Okay. All right, continue, please. Continue.
It is not an attack. It is an actual statement that Mr. Michelot, while he may have been well-liked by some people, had problems with some people. For instance, our roads were not paved for 25 years, and not until I fell in the potholes that for months and months and months I had been... No, more than that, years. I had actually worked on trying to get filled when I fell in the pothole, which could have changed my life dramatically, and smacked my face and smacked my knee, and then our potholes got filled after 25 years. And so it's not just that. But this particular War Memorial also, Mr. Michelot had millions of dollars over the years that he managed in contracts. And I know I brought to you many times issues of payments. For instance, where were the pavings going that were scraped up from the roads? And we never got answers on those things. There was no transparency. And this is a way, by having a nonprofit in his name, of people paying back big favors that they've been gotten, not only from the past, but in the future. And this should not be. And also, you are giving yourself the blessing to break the law. The law that we set was by ordinance that said three years, and you are giving yourself the... You took an oath to uphold our laws. On your double agendas night, you're a...
Ms. Layman, thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone additional? I can't see right now. Do we have anyone additional on Zoom with their hand raised?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Ashley. Manager Manfredi, is there something you wanted to comment on? I thought you might want to.
I was just going to, for the attendees on Zoom and in the room, the rules of procedure with respect to removing an item from the agenda are just what Commissioner Hecker said. His intent was to postpone, but we do not remove items that are on the agenda once it is finalized. It is a matter of consent to remove it from the agenda. So Commissioner Hecker, or anyone else that has an agenda item, would have to have the consent of the majority to remove it from the agenda, and that happens in the public transparently, so it's not something that gets taken off and hidden from people.
Thank you for that clarification, Manager Manfredi. All right, now, speaking of the consent agenda, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, and Vice President and Ward 1 Commissioner Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. This is a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed in this evening's meeting materials, items A through D, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners in the boardroom? Yep. Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Behe.
I would like to address my city and issue to me. I must repeat what I said last month. Ed Michelot took something that was an ISO...
I can't hear Commissioner Myers.
...no more significant...
Can't hear her.
I'm sorry. I was not on. I'll start over real quick. I'm going to repeat some of the things that I said last month, that Ed Michelot took what was an ISO, an essentially just barely maintained island named War Memorial Island that deserved so much more. He took something on his own, formed his own committee. I'm so proud of the fact that my husband was part of that committee, and he made something that will be there forever for every soldier, veteran, memorial, anyone who served to serve our country. We should be so proud of that and incredibly grateful to Ed, and we all know that he did this, and he wasn't well at the time, and still he did this. He and his committee raised the money. They designed it. It was an incredible feat. We are all so proud of that island and that particular area and what he did, and if it wasn't for Ed, that would not be there. And I don't care how anyone feels or felt about Ed Michelot. That had nothing to do with his service and making this island park possible.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Myers.
Here.
Commissioner Behe?
Just want to comment how disappointing it is to see someone defame the reputation of deceased individual who gave his life to this township. It's totally inappropriate. I'm very grateful for everything that Mr. Michelot did for this township, and so should every citizen that lives here.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Behe. And I'm going to make a quick personal note that both of your sentiments, I believe, are widely shared, certainly by me. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners in the room, and then we're going to go to Commissioners on Zoom? Okay, questions or comments from Commissioners on Zoom? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Thank you, President Spiegelman.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. Now, we move on to unfinished business of the Board of Commissioners, and again, turn to Vice President and Ward 1 Commissioner Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. The Board has one matter of unfinished business this evening. This is BOC-02-090921. This is a motion to consider the agreement between Abington Township and Minell Associates, LLC, and authorization of Township Manager to execute the agreement. And before I make the motion, I think I want to turn it over to Ward 1 Commissioner Ken... or Ward 2 Commissioner Ken Brodsky. Sorry, I was not trying to...
You read my mind. Commissioner Brodsky?
Thanks, Vice President Hecker. Thank you, President Spiegelman. So for this evening, I would like to present a motion to table this until next month, with the idea being that the parties need to further meet, discuss various issues. So I'd like to present the motion to table the unfinished business, list number A, BOC 02, between the parties.
Okay.
Just the procedural... Are you saying to move it to November 10th or table?
I want to table it for this evening.
And you have a date certain you want to move it to?
Next month. Whatever next month's...
November 10th. Okay. Manager Manfredi, can I go ahead and ask for a second before any comments, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood the intent.
That's correct.
Okay, hopefully everyone heard and understood, Commissioner Brodsky.
There are no comments on a motion to table.
Okay, so we do need a second, right?
Once you get your second, you call them.
Gotcha. Thank you for that procedural assistance.
Second.
Solicitor Clark, we have... Okay, we have a motion, a second. All right. Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Brodsky's motion to table the matter of Minell Road until the November 10th meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. It's tabled, Commissioner Brodsky.
That's it. And that concludes the business for unfinished business, and we'll see you this next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have the unfinished business of the Land Use Committee. And so we call upon Land Use Committee Chair... I'm sorry, this is... I apologize. This is actually a recused matter, so we call upon Land Use Committee Vice Chair and Ward 7 Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you very much, President Spiegelman. This is Land Use Committee Agenda Item LU-02-090921. Motion to consider and adopt proposed ordinance number 2186, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the Township of Abington, providing for and regulating college/university campus use in the CS Community Service District, and Ordinance Number 2187, an ordinance amending the official zoning level of Abington Township by rezoning three parcels from the residential load density R1 District to the Community Service CS District. Before I ask for a second, I think I'm going to give this to Commissioner Hecker to make any comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Yes, as Manager Manfredi indicated, I am seeking the consent of the majority of the Board this evening to postpone this matter until November 10th, which is the next board meeting. And the reason for that is that there has been additional concern raised by the neighbors that I am working with Township Manager, Township Solicitor, and the Chancellor of Penn State Abington to work through, and we believe we will be at that point at next month's meeting.
Okay, do we... Do I have to do what...
Well, since this is an ordinance amendment and this is an advertised hearing, we're going to ask for a little bit more specificity with your motion. So this would be a motion to table until Thursday, November 10th.
Wednesday, November 10th?
Veterans Day.
Sorry, Veterans Day. I'll be announcing that later, but I might as well just announce it now. Our November meeting is not going to be on Thursday.
Okay, I apologize.
It's Wednesday, November 10th, because Veterans Day is Thursday, November 11th.
Wednesday, November 10th at 6:30 PM in this room at the Township Building.
Okay.
And this way, we don't have to re-advertise the hearing.
Is that sufficient for the motion?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let us go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. It's tabled to November 2nd. Thank you, Vice President Hecker, and thank you also, Commissioner Weingrad.
Thank you. And that would conclude the Land Use Committee business of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to the new business of Board of Commissioners, and once again, Vice President and Ward 1 Commissioner Tom Hecker.
So this was the... We're going to be...
Oh! All right. This... Okay, so this is actually... I guess I'm going to go ahead. Do I read the motion and then make the motion to table?
No. I think if it is your intent to seek the consent of the Board to remove this from this agenda, or did you want to vote on it? It depends what your pleasure is.
All right, then, I guess my pleasure, as it were, is I'm going to move that Item BOC-01-101421 be removed from tonight's agenda with board consent, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Item is removed. All right. You're off the hook there, Vice President Hecker.
Thank you.
And now we move to the new business of the Public Safety Committee. Public Safety Committee Chair and Ward 14 Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
Thank you very much, and nothing's being removed or tabled from my agenda this evening.
You never know.
Okay. PS 01101421 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2185, amending Chapter 65, burning, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? We're going to start with Commissioners here in the boardroom. Commissioner De Placido, you're the one I was going to turn to.
Thank you. I just wanted to, once again, thank everyone for their collaboration on revising this. We had even more meetings, and we did work to establish some more of the verbiage that most parties wanted, and I think it suits the ordinance just fine, and I think it's ready to go. So I'm looking forward to getting this on the November agenda and getting it passed. Thank you very much.
And Commissioner De Placido, thank you for your extensive legwork and homework and everything you did, and thanks, of course, to the Fire Department. I know this was a huge effort, so kudos to all involved. Any questions or comments from Commissioners participating via Zoom?
I have a question.
Commissioner... Yes, Commissioner Zepone.
Okay. Was verbiage put in there about what we discussed at the last meeting about people medically infirmed with asthma and all? Was that included in there?
Yes, I happen to know, and also I see from the nodding of Solicitor Clark, affirmative, yes.
Yes, there is language in there. We're not adding it. There's already language in there that addresses that, and that remains.
So there is language in there addressing those matters.
Oh, great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners over Zoom? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And our second item is PS 02101421, which is a motion to appoint candidates Eliana Carino, George Rucker, Nordia Henry from the civil service eligibility list to the position of probationary police officer, provided they successfully complete the background, physical, and psychological exams and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120, training effective October 15th, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? We'll start this time. Questions or comments from Commissioners over Zoom? Questions or comments from Commissioners in the room? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Now, for the Finance Committee agenda, we turn to Finance Committee Chair and Ward 12 Commissioner Matt Behe.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I'll turn first to our Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal, for his report.
Treasurer Blumenthal, can you hear us?
Yeah, he's trying to go... Jay, you are muted?
Jay, you're muted.
Now I am. I'm unmuted now. Thank you.
Fantastic.
I couldn't give my report verbally if I was muted. I'm going to start out with the real estate taxes collected for the month of September 2021, and I'd like to make a comment about it. First of all, we collected $36,430, which is an increase over the prior year of $1,259. And as you can see, year-to-date, we're at 98% and balance to collect is 2%. And I've mentioned in previous years that this is not unusual for Montgomery County and that we always, like 90... Majority of the time, I've never seen it different. We end up at the year with at least a 98% collection rate, which I think is good, and that's throughout Montgomery County, and luckily, we are at that percentage at this point. As for the amount of monies deposited from different revenues, from different departments within the township for the month of September, which the real estate taxes are part of, we collected for the month of September $4,849.143, which is an increase of the prior year over the prior year of $639,000, $348. And if you look at year-to-date, we collected $67,577,855 as of September 30th, as compared to the prior year of $56,227,707. Year-to-date increase of $11,351,48. That is my report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal.
Thank you.
Move on to the next item on the Finance Committee's agenda. It's a motion to approve the August 2021 expenditures in the amount of $2,167,973.21 in salaries and wages in the amount of $1,997,441.15 in authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of November 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners on Zoom? From Commissioners in the room? All right, let's have the roll call vote, please.
Commissioners Thompson?
Yes.
Brodsky?
Yes.
Boe?
Yes.
Carswell?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Zepone?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
De Placido?
Yes.
Weingrad?
Yes.
Behe?
Yes.
Tribber?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes. Motion carries.
The final item on the Finance Committee's agenda is FC-02-101421. It's a motion to approve $23,680 for the Abington Township Fire Department firefighter physicals for the addition of stress testing and urine histology testing for bladder cancer. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments for Commissioners in the room? On Zoom? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes the business of the Finance Committee this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Behe. All right, now we are going to have... Now we're going to have public comment on general items. We're going to switch it up this time. We're going to start with folks on Zoom and then folks in the room. So can we... Anyone who has their hand up on Zoom, can we please let them in? I can't see, so you'll have to... If you could just let the first person in. Sorry, my vision's really bad.
Mr. Morse, your microphone is unmuted. You'll just need to unmute it on your device.
Can I do it?
Yes, you can begin.
Paul Morse, Glen Road, Jenkentown. Just to have a couple of points. First, I think it's very important that these meetings should be in-person for all, both citizens and for the Commissioners. It's important for citizens to see how our representatives and their interactions on each subject. Zoom just doesn't work for the citizens, and many other organizations are back to in-person meetings. So I think that's very important. I see that about probably half the Commissioners are still Zooming. Second thing I have is, I noticed on the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Hall that the PREIT issue is on the table. I'm amazed at how this subject was on the agenda when the EDC meeting was just two days ago. So I am very surprised at that. And the third point I have, I'm relatively sure that when the attendance was taken at the EDC meeting, that there was no quorum. It's very tough when people are Zooming, as you can tell, whether they're in attendance or not. And I do not believe there was a quorum when that was called, and that would make that meeting illegal. And again, that's dealing with the PREIT issue. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morse. If you could let the next Zoom participant in, please.
This is Laura Layman on Bryant Lane. And I can't even imagine how outraged people would be if they understood what was going on. At that EDC meeting, the figures were completely out of whack. They had $13,000 was the figure they used per student. We don't have $13,000 per student. They cost $22,000 per student. They had their figures all mixed up with the mall and everything else, and when they un-mixed them, which they did in the middle of the meeting, nobody could see what was on that screen. We didn't have the documents. That was inappropriate to schedule this when you have not... You did not even have the answer from the EDC when you scheduled this meeting. And we do not have the documents or the chance to actually question those documents before tonight's decision at the Committee of the Whole on Preet. That is inappropriate, and you are giving yourselves absolutely, on this agenda alone, multiple opportunities to break the law. The War Memorial thing requires a three-year wait. You don't have the right, every time you feel like you don't like our laws, you're going to break them. You took an oath to actually uphold our laws. You're going to break the law on Riddle Park. We have codes and laws about the buffer. And the EAC didn't stand beside me, as Kaki said, we made a statement. Their statement was, oh, we'll just maintain the patio. That's a violation of our laws and codes to protect the buffers and streams. And in an area where it's flooding mightily, and where Kaki was in another room doing climate change presentations, this is outrageous, what's going on in this township. And the issue with Penn State, Mr. Hecker told the residents outright that they were not going to have the meeting tonight, so they couldn't have had the meeting. They couldn't have had the hearing on Penn State. And this is not okay for you to allow everybody else not to have that information, so that they're busy wasting their time. You need to get a township that works for the residents of the township. But I am way concerned about the money on Preet and the Willow Grove Mall and all the illegal things that have happened, including the fact that there is absolutely no accounting for how many apartments can be built over there.
All right, Ms. Lehman, your time has expired, thank you for your comments. Ashley, is there anyone else participating on Zoom?
Carrie, your microphone has been unmuted.
Hi, I'm Carrie. I live on Berkeley Avenue, and I've been a long time Abington resident, and I'm going to kind of cut to the chase. I'm very curious why the Commissioners want to reinvent Philadelphia. This kind of mindset did not work for Philadelphia. Philadelphia went from proud homeowners to tons of apartments to tons of crime. Number one crime city in the nation, as a matter of fact. Nobody wants to go to Philadelphia, nobody wants to live in Philadelphia, nobody wants to use their services, medical or otherwise, nobody wants to shop in Philadelphia. Why are we recreating this? I'm just curious. It didn't work in Philadelphia, it didn't work in Chicago, and it didn't work in New York. Why are we changing our county from a beautiful place into a place ridden with traffic, smog, apartments, and crime? Why do you want to do that? I'm just curious. And also, I am curious why people are not disclosing any kind of allegiance or any kind... Why are they not recusing themselves? If you're a Commissioner, why are you not recusing yourself for something that directly pertains to yourself or your relatives? This reminds me of something that's a little bit banana republic-esque, and this is not Abington. This is very, very sad. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you for your comments. Ashley, is there anybody else participating on Zoom?
Natalie Powell, your microphone has been unmuted, you'll just need to unmute on your device.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Powell.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just turned this meeting on because I was just informed that you're going to be voting on the Preet situation. I live on 1920 Fleming Avenue, which is about three or four blocks from the mall, and I went through, when we first moved into this neighborhood, I went through the actual mall situation, putting the mall in place of the amusement park. But what I'm seeing tonight and the last three meetings, which is the only ones I knew about, is very disturbing. I just saw you vote on an ordinance, and one of the Commissioners asked what the language was in that ordinance that he was voting on, for crying out loud. Why wasn't the ordinance read before you took the vote? That's unbelievable. Or why doesn't the Commissioner know what the changes were in that ordinance before they're voting on it? It's unbelievable what I'm seeing. I saw someone, at one of the meetings, they actually started a vote on the Preet issue, and they allowed the lawyer to break into the vote and talk for 45 minutes. Meanwhile, we were limited to three minutes after the vote. Unbelievable. I just don't know why you're rushing to put these apartments around the mall in a very congested area already. It just doesn't make sense. But the worst thing is the lack of communication with your citizens that are closest to the mall that know nothing about it. I put a notice on Neighbor for the last economic meeting that it was at 7:30 and that it was about the Preet and putting malls in. I was so inundated with people from North Hills, Ardsley, Roslyn, my own neighborhood, that did not know what I was talking about. And they had 1,001 questions about it. It was so bad that I finally had to close my site because it was blocking my emails coming in, and I have important emails coming in. So, I mean, this vote should not be taking place, because 50% of the people around the mall don't even know about it. You haven't had, you really haven't had decent public meetings to discuss it and its impact. And I have to agree with Laura, at the last economic thing, their numbers are all askew. Even Leonetti told them that they were not using the Abington numbers, and he still voted to approve that it was going to be a financial benefit. Unbelievable. I just, I am breathless with what I'm experiencing at these meetings. It's a real eye-opener, and I'm very upset, and I'm, you know... And the thing is that you're going to have another meeting after November 2nd, which is, isn't that our elections?
Ms. Powell, thank you. Ms. Powell, your time has expired, thank you for your comments. All right, Ashley, is there anyone else participating via Zoom?
There are no more hands raised.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, now we'll turn to folks here in the room.
Joe Rooney, I live on Maple Avenue in Ardsley. What value do you place on free speech? What value do you place on good government? I'm here to discuss three issues: free speech, abuse of power in office, and violation of the PA Sunshine Act. I'm going to start with an anecdote. As a Marine, I trained to become an expert fighter pilot. I needed to learn how to fly the F-4 and the F-18 to the very limit of its designed ability. This is called the maneuvering envelope. Knowing exactly what the F-4's limits were for speed, turn rate, and radius was crucial. At some point, that could mean the difference between accomplishing my mission and surviving and getting shot down. As a Delta captain, my company and passengers expect me to fly my aircraft cautiously with a large and safe margin as possible. I was careful to avoid bad weather, to avoid turbulence, and treat every maintenance issue with caution. My passengers wanted me to turn early to avoid thunderstorms, to change altitude and route to avoid turbulence. I wanted my passengers to have an uneventful and safe flight. Your attention to our right to free speech should be the same as my approach to aviation. Your job is to maintain a margin of safety around the right of free speech. You need to look at yourselves as airline pilots, not fighter pilots. Our right to free speech in our Bill of Rights exists to protect us, the citizens, from government overreach. The PA Constitution is even more explicit on the limits of government, limits on your authority and actions as Township Commissioners. If you think your actions may violate our rights, don't do it. Instead, you use a Township Solicitor to see how much you can abuse free speech and still provide a smokescreen against citizens who jealously guard our God-given rights. In June, two Commissioners co-opted the Township flagpole to pursue their own partisan political agenda without any proper actions from the Commissioners. No public meeting, no discussion, no vote. You turned our Township flagpole into a free speech zone. You have no authority to make your personal political statements and deny those with whom you disagree that same opportunity. This is called abuse of power in your office. I insist that until you discuss, vote on, and pass some uniform standards for use of the Township flagpole, that you allow me and other residents the right to fly our flag from that same flagpole for the exact same amount of time that you flew your partisan flag. My position is that no flag, other than a Stars and Stripes, could fly on it. My wife and I and our kids have dedicated nearly 70 years of military service to defend our Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. After you stole my flag, I have stood for 40 hours this week in front of this building to defend the right of free speech for all residents. What value do you place on free speech, and what value do you place on good government?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rooney. Any other comments on general matters from folks here in the room?
Hi, my name is Beth Rooney, I would just like to say that I agree entirely with what my husband said.
Thank you, Mrs. Rooney, for your comments. Any other comments from anyone in the room?
I would like to answer some of what was just said.
Be short. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Schreiber, and then Commissioner Myers.
Well, since I've been accused twice now, and I feel attacked at this point, I just want to address that we did not break any laws. We did stand up for your rights, your free speech, because you are allowed to stand in front of the building holding your flag. It is not partisan, I'm speaking right now, you don't need to stand up. I will... Okay. Okay, no, but I thought you were going to come forward to answer. So, you know, my feeling is that this is not partisan, this is standing up for people's rights, civil rights. It's really interesting, we're having this dialogue tonight, because Commissioner Spiegelman and I just left, Art Haywood had something, a program about loving thy neighbor, where they talked about civility. And civility, the words civil rights come from civility, being civil to people. And we are standing up for people's civil rights, showing pride. I understand that you have a cause, and you believe in that cause. I may not share your beliefs, but I understand that you have a right. And I would support your right for your particular cause. That does not mean that your flag can go up on the flagpole, and that was explained to you. And one other thing that you have said is about us breaking the sunshine rules, the sunshine laws... Let me move this up so you can hear me. The sunshine laws, and as if we had done something wrong. This is something we are allowed to do, which has been explained to you in writing several times at this point. And that I called all of my fellow Commissioners was to have a dialogue with my fellow Commissioners one-on-one, which I am allowed to do. That is not breaking sunshine laws in any way. I am allowed to talk to other people. There was no votes taken, and if you would like our Solicitor, because he is paid to help us talk about things that are legal matters. It's not that we're turning things over to him or that he's ruling something in this township. It's that he is paid, his job is to explain the law. So if you would like him to explain the sunshine laws to you, he can certainly do that. Thank you.
No, no, please. Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Myers, did you...
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Schreiber did indeed call me, I'm assuming all the Commissioners, but she certainly did call me. And at the time, I said, I was fine, and I had no problem with it, still don't. However, in looking back, and this becoming somewhat of an issue, and this has nothing to do with what the flag represents, this could be any flag, but I really have, in my research, found that no other flag should be on the pole with the American flag except a government flag, and that would be state, county, municipal. And in my research, the only other flag that I could see was the POW MIA, and that is actually considered a national banner. I do feel that a second flagpole would be very appropriate and could be done for a month at a time through a permanent process. I think right next to the American flag. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I don't mean this to get into the actual representation of the flag. I am talking about any flag.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. We're going to be, we do need to wrap up this meeting, but as the other Commissioner who was referenced in the comments and was very proud to work with my close friend and colleague, Commissioner Schreiber, on getting that flag up, I want to make it very, very clear that Commissioner Schreiber consulted with our Solicitor, who again, is the person who's in charge of making sure that we follow the laws, explain the laws to us, keeping us within the lines of the laws. And he gave a very clear answer citing specific court precedent case law about why it was okay to join many, many municipalities in Montgomery County, join Montgomery County itself, counties and communities throughout our Commonwealth, join our Commonwealth and many communities throughout our entire country in raising this particular flag in the month of June. And with that, I think we're done with this topic. The last thing I'm going to say, as a reminder, next month's meeting is not on Thursday, because Thursday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, it's a holiday. And so our meeting is going to be, the board meeting is going to start at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, November 10th. So please mark your calendars for that, and with that, we are adjourned.